What do you mean? Please run us through the Fledge of Legions.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the January 12th meeting of the Board of President of the School Town of Speedway. We will be operating tonight from an 11 item agenda. And the first item is to undertake what we do every year, which is our board reorganization. Do I have a motion for reorganization?
Not president. I'd like to make a motion for the following slate. President Bill Harding, Vice President Luke Bickel, Secretary Tom Smith, as well as our Corporation Treasurer Nancy Johnson, and I'd like to add the ISBA Policy Liaisonist Laura DeGue, and the ISB Legislative Liaisonist Luke Bickel.
And as our current, as it has been our past practice, I will second that as not being someone who is in one of those office positions. Do we have any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the board reorganization, Nancy Johnson as our treasurer, and the two ISBA positions, as Debbie stated, indicate by raising your hand. And that passes. And so with that, I will pass the reins over of the board presidency to Mr. Harding here. And it's been a pleasure to serve you all this year.
Thank you, Laura.
Let's just stay where we are.
Stay where we are.
Yeah, we're close enough. We're just with.
True, kind of. Good point.
The second item on the agenda this evening is to approve the minutes for December 8th, 2020's meeting. Do you have a motion, Mr. Smith?
I'll move that we accept the minutes from our December 8th, 2020 meeting.
And a second?
And a second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? And all those in favor, please signify, raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. The third item on the agenda is to adopt expenditure goals for 2021. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. President. Speedway continues to exceed the target percentage based on the latest available data, and the recommendation is to adopt the following goal. The school town of Speedway shall maintain the current levels percentages between the expenditures for the student instruction categories and the other expenditure categories as described in Indiana Code 20-42.5-3-4 for the next fiscal year.
Is there a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion to adopt the expenditure goal for 2021, as stated.
And a second?
A second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the motion?
The only discussion that I would add, I think, is, Dr. Trouble, can you tell us a little more of the, in terms of expenditure goal, am I right in recalling that that's the money that goes to the classroom?
Yes, that is correct. So many years ago, Indiana Code made it to where school corporations had to put money back into the classrooms instead of allowing us just to spend it where we'd like it to go. So the taxpayers send us money, and by code, we have to spend it back to the classroom, which for Marion County, we're in the top for Marion County, what we spend for our students, in other words, the instruction and all the pieces that go along that directly impacts our student learning, and also well over 80% of what we receive from taxpayers that go directly into the classroom, that's going to be hard to find anywhere else.
That's, that's just important for people to realize.
Absolutely, thank you. Great question.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Then I would ask the board to signify approval. And that's unanimous as well. The fourth item on the agenda is to approve adjustments to the 2020 budget appropriations.
In December of each year, the board authorizes the treasurer Nancy Johnson to transfer funds between accounts as required and necessary. A record of those transfers is included in the packet, and the recommendation is to approve those transfers as presented. Please note the value of these transfers is zero because we're moving, not expending funds, between subaccounts inside a larger account. For example, we moved funds over appropriated 18 months ago for health insurance to pay for the salary of a teacher we added in August. The recommendation is to approve the adjustments of 2020 budget appropriations.
Is there a motion concerning this issue from the board? Is it DGA?
I move that we approve the adjustments to the 2020 but, of the 2020 budget appropriations.
And a second? Is there any further discussion on the issue?
The only discussion I have is that there's three copies of this right here. Is that because these are the ones to be signed, Kyle? No? Yes?
No, that's for the Transfer Rainy Day Fund.
Oh, that is.
That's the next document.
And that is, those are to be signed?
That'll be next, yes.
Okay. I was throwing them in all my papers and...
Yeah, they're just there.
Okay.
So if there's no further discussion, then what's the board's pleasure on this item, approving the adjustments to the 2020 budget appropriations? All those in favor? And that is a unanimous yes. The fifth item on the agenda this evening is to adopt resolution to transfer funds to the rainy day fund.
Mr. President, the recommendation is to adopt the enclosed resolution, which is to your right, Laura's left, a resolution to transfer $863,000 to the rainy day fund from the referendum fund.
Okay, is there a motion from the board? Mr. Bickel?
I move that we adopt the resolution to transfer the funds to the rainy day fund.
And Mr. Smith?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the issue? Hearing none. That's the board to signify a yes currently. And that's a unanimous in favor of transferring the funds. And now having completed that task, we'll move to our sixth agenda item, which is the presentation of the 21-22 Speedway High School Course Description Guide. Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to try to keep this, my words brief in this presentation brief with just the particulars, so that I have some time to kind of go in detail about the innovative and exciting curriculum offerings for the upcoming school year. So I'm going to just walk through the curriculum guide, course description, cover letter, and then I will go into detail, and then I will have time for any questions that the board may have. All highlighted items in your curriculum guide packet reflect changes or additions from this current academic year's curriculum guide. Keep in mind that all course descriptions from each department have been changed to reflect the official course description from 2021, 22 Indiana High School course titles and descriptions from the DOE. All new courses and/or policies may need to be added because things continue to change each year for each cohort. So keep that in mind. Any significant change from last year's curriculum guide has been stricken with the strike through, with the old verbiage remaining. And we will, of course, do a revised table of content, contents that will be included with this document once final revisions have been made. And the next pages will just go over the comments and explanations. On page three, we did add the language, or add the phrase, National, 2020 National Blue Ribbon School for receiving that award for the 2020, 2019, 2020 school year. So we added that verbiage. On page four, you will notice that all pre-AP language has been stricken. And that is because College Board has now, they have trademarked pre-AP. And there's a charge if you include pre-AP on a transcript in your curriculum guide. So it just didn't make sense to pay for that language. So the title has been changed from pre-AP to Honor Prep, and it's the same exact concept, same type of course. But that is the titles now as opposed to pre-AP. We did remove Honor Art and Design AP and Honor Calculus BC. Those courses will not be offered, and I'll go into greater detail about those in a few moments. Honor AP Art History will be offered in place of Honor Art and Design AP. And the Calculus BC course is not offered as a standalone course. Now, and that, I can go into detail about that a little later as well, but that is not offered as a standalone course due to staffing issues. Mr. Passwater, who teaches our AP Calculus AB course, we try to have him teach all of the, as many sections of pre-calculus and trigonometry as possible, so that he's preparing those students for the Calculus AB curriculum. So with the sections that are available for pre-calculus and AB, and he's also doing AP Stats, it's not possible to have just a standalone Calculus BC course. However, that BC material is still taught in the Calculus AB course, because students that take the BC exam obviously have to also know the AB material. So that curriculum, that enrichment curriculum is taught in the AB course, and we find time through plug time, we have scheduled morning meetings, as well as what he does in the classroom. And last year, last May, we had seven students take the BC exam, and all seven students passed the Calculus BC exam with a qualifying score. This also gives us flexibility. If we were to offer it as a standalone course, where a student had to take Calculus AB as well as Calculus BC, that obviously would take the place of another course offering that that student may want to take. But it would only be a singleton course, and that could conflict with other AP courses. With the approach that we did this past school year, using plug time, scheduled time in the morning, as well as using the classroom time for those students to get the additional enrichment for the BC, it gives us a little more flexibility. So any student that is interested in taking the Calculus BC exam is not exempt from doing that because of a scheduling issue. They're going to get that material and that curriculum and that enrichment during the AB course as well as during plug time. So just wanted to kind of touch on that. On page eight, the AP Computer Science Principles course counts as a math as well and science requirement, and/or science requirement. So that has been included on page eight in that chart. We removed the old course title, Geography and History of the World, and included World History and Civilization. That is actually the appropriate title. For years, we've always called it Geography and History of the World, and that is not the accurate description. So we're just making that accurate for this upcoming school year. It doesn't change what Mrs. Baker teaches in that course, but we want the title to reflect accurately what is being taught in that course. On page 13, you should have gotten an addendum from Mr. Disney today, this evening. We removed the language about the transcript, but I did want to briefly talk about why that language was there initially. The school has always, as a practice, for school records, used what the birth certificate, the name on the birth certificate as the legal name for school records. We also will use any kind of other legal documentation as well. So if a student has a name changed through the court, if a student is adopted, we would use those, that legal documentation to change the school record. What we can't, what, the reason that practice is in place is so you can't have a student say, I would, my name is James, but I want my school records to be Jimmy. So that it needs to reflect the accurate name on the birth certificate or other legal documentation. We just simply removed that, that language. We can, we've been, that has been the practice since, I've been here since 2001, and there is guidance from the DOE about school records reflecting the birth certificate or other legal documentation. It's just not exclusively the birth certificate, but it just can't be where a student comes in and just says, I want to go by my middle name, not my first name. So that's why that, that was the, and we've been having some occurrences with that this year, and that's why you saw that language more than than normal. And students have been fine. We've told parents and we've told students that it must reflect what is on the birth certificate, and they understand that information, or other legal documentation, and they understand that information. I've already went over the Honor Prep language and why that pre-AP was removed. For the chart, where we have, where I've lowered the grade for AP Art History to 10th grade. The reason for that is the enrollment for, it used to be 11th and 12th grade, but there's a strong correlation between AP Art History and AP World History. And so all freshmen, well, not all freshmen, but a significant amount of our freshman students enter high school taking AP World History, and it's a good building course for the AP Art History. So we wanted to, again, continue to be broad and intentional in giving as much access to our students as possible, so that now a sophomore will be able to take AP Art History. So that's why you see the grade change. For the AP English Language and Composition, traditionally that is an 11th grade course. You'll notice the 12th grade highlights where it says 11th through 12th grade. That has been updated, and I will definitely go into detail about that, about the AP Lang and Comp that students will take their senior year. So that's why you see the update in that grade. I won't go back over the AP Calculus BC. I believe I've explained why that was stricken as just the specific course, and because the way BC Calculus works, a student could actually earn a qualifying score on the AB exam and not earn a qualifying score on the BC exam. So there's a sub-score for the BC. But because it's not a standalone, a standalone course, and they're in the AB course, that is why that is the course that will be on their transcript. But the student can still earn BC credit by taking the BC exam and earning a qualifying score on the BC exam. So I didn't mention that when I was going over the BC, removing the BC course, because that won't be an actual course students will sign up for. Digital Design and AP Art Design were both removed. Those were just classes that, just again, course capitalism did not continue to grow, and we only had, we can either offer one or the other, AP Art History or AP Art Design. And the AP Art History one, it wins out on that year after year. So the AP Art Design, which is more of a two-dimensional, hands-on type of art class, was removed, I believe, last year, maybe three students signed up for that course. And we had 20 students sign up for AP Art History. Now, the English eleven, the English courses, and I wanted to kind of just give you some background on this innovative English curriculum design that we are trying to put forth for the upcoming school year. Essentially, the English 11, the AP course covers several very specific things regarding writing, and I won't go into details about that, but covers several things regarding writing. The English 11 curriculum, as it currently stands, we want students to be able to take the full year AP Lang, the first semester of AP Lang, and take that first semester over the full year of English 11. The second semester of AP Lang, they would take their senior year, and it would be over the entire year of English 12. So what, a student that is on the Honor English track, they would still continue to do AP Lang as a, as a junior. Senior year, they would take AP Lit. A student that is on the quote-unquote "regular" English track would take English 9, English 10. The English 11, the English 11 is where they would do the first semester of AP Lang for the full year of English 11. Their senior year, they would take AP, the second semester of AP Lang, and then, over the full year of English 12, and then take the AP English Lang and Composition exam May of their senior year. Now, what does that do? It does a lot of different things. Actually, I use the term innovative, because as you know, we have always touted ourselves as being an open access school. And I think the research backs us up on this. The more we open up our curriculum to all students, the better we are to serve all students. I won't get too personal, but I do have a goddaughter who received all As first semester. She doesn't attend this school. And all As in her classes as a freshman, she's, she isn't in one AP course, and there's barriers in all of these things they have to do to try to just get one AP course. If she was here at Speedway, she would probably be in all Honor Prep courses, AP World History, and be planning to take, continue to take all of the AP courses that we offer. I think that's just a backward approach. And I say backwards because it limits some of your most vulnerable and underrepresented students. If you don't have a parent or an advocate that is saying, hey, you should be taking these courses, sometimes students will just go to their lowest common denominator and take whatever is available for them. By having systemic curriculum design and having it where our students, that is the curriculum, is a sound, AP curriculum is a sound curriculum, whether you're a plumber, you're going to college, you're going to work on furnaces, if we're going to do HVAC work, writing is a huge component of whatever you do in life. So to make sure that our students are coming out of Speedway High School with a sound writing curriculum, such as AP Language and Composition, I think best serves our students, all of our students. So then the question becomes, well, man, what if a student is in this course and, you know, it is just, it is truly just too much, or there's something that, even though we're breaking it out over, you know, one semester over a year, both years, we will have exit ramps. I like to use the phrase exit ramps for those students, so that we are able to support those students as well. The concept behind this is, again, looping. We talked about Mr. Passwater with pre-calculus and calculus. This, we want to have the same concept for English. The English 11 teacher, Mr. Taylor, who has all of the English 11 kids in his course right now, has, we have met and gone through those kids, and he's, maybe it's a very small amount of students that he's even put, that he's identified, that he thinks would need this exit ramp after having them for an entire semester and moving into the second semester. We will have, that exit ramp will allow our students who aren't doing that English Lang curriculum over the two years to still be able to obviously earn their English 11 and 12 credit with a, with still a very structured curriculum. By the looping concept, it allows Mr. Taylor to be able to build those students up in 11th grade, they know him, senior year is when they would take the AP exam. So we're really excited about it, and the other piece, and then I'll move off to English, is that it does check off box three. We did the same concept with Psychology last year. If you may remember, I stood up and I said that we would, we would have AP Psychology as the junior social studies course. It's, again, a one semester course that we do over a full year. Last year, Mr. Beard taught 46, I mean, 68 students took the AP Psych exam, 46 passed. That's 67%. He only had one section of regular psychology. We currently have every junior taking AP Psychology, and it is, it's so, and we obviously haven't taken the AP exam for this year, but I can tell you just from being in the, on the, on the field, we don't have students, you know, down in the counseling office asking to come out of AP Psychology because they're so overwhelmed. Our students really just rise to the occasion of what we put in front of them. So that concept, now we have AP Psychology, we have AP Lang. If you look on, and you don't have to, to go to the page, but if you look on page 11 in the curriculum guide, box three, which is the third from the bullet, third from the bottom bullet point, mentions, you have, the class of 2023, beginning with the class of 2023, has to check off box three to graduate. That either is through a SAT benchmark score, because I-Step is gone, certifications, or, as you noticed in that bullet, three AP classes with a C average. And that C average is over for those three AP courses. Our students are already ahead of the curve because they now will have two, just by the design of our curriculum. AP Psychology, AP Lang, that they would take senior year. And because of, the counselors have been, they intentionally, when they meet with students individually, are trying to find the most rigorous curriculum for that student, and we have so many AP offerings, that third AP course will be pretty easy to add to their, that student's curriculum, whether it's AP Government, AP Computer Science, AP Environmental Science. And that actually is a safety net, so if the student, if the student doesn't hit that benchmark, or doesn't get a certification, box three is checked off, just by the curriculum design. Thinking ahead, we're, I've been talking with Mr. Passwater, trying to think of ways, we have the two humanities pretty much covered between Psychology and Language. We still want to try to hit in the STEM area, again, with our underrepresented groups, or our most vulnerable students, so that they can also be exposed to the STEM curriculums, whether it's math, or science, or technology. We have the AP Computer Science, and we're talking about creative ways, and we'll save that for next year's meeting, but I just wanted to kind of tell you what our thinking is, moving ahead is, because then that guarantees the three AP courses as, as part of that math curriculum. And the student, we were thinking from the math side, and the student that doesn't hit that curriculum would still obviously just do the Geometry Algebra II, Algebra, I mean Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II. So a student that's not on that C points, there's exit ramps for that student as well. Hopefully that wasn't too long. The last page, I just, again, removed the geography, and that is all I have. Any questions? Please let me know. I'm on the, back to the cover page, sorry.
First, I mean, I feel like we ought to like to slow clap here, because just so impressive.
Very good, yeah, very good.
I'm, I just, I do have a couple of questions. No shock. I mean, you would have been shocked had I not, right? All our years together, Mr. Warren. But I, but I have to start out by saying just how proud I am that, you know, we talk all the time about, you know, back when, back in the day when my kids were here, and just the way that we have, it's just, it's just very different. And, you know, for, all the way from the ability to plan your programming at the junior high level into the high school, all, I mean, this, I think this is amazing. I would be shocked if anyone else in the state is doing it. And it's just, I mean, I'm just, I'm so proud. I love to talk about other educators about what we're doing here. I just blow people out of the water with what we're doing here. And, and I think it's really important that the community understands that, that, you know, we hang all these banners and get all these awards, but this bit of you guys figuring out, it's just by the design piece of it, is just, ah, it's just outstanding. So thank you so much, and please pass our, our thanks down to the people who are part of, you know, part of making that all happen. My couple of questions. Did we have, was BC a standalone class last year?
No, it was not.
Okay, so the seven students who were taking BC as part of, and earned qualifying scores, were doing what we're basically talking about still, okay.
Yep, the exact same thing.
Related to that, I know through the years, there were times when we had like, like a Physics II class, or that was kind of like taught in the back of the room, that, so you could actually take the class, but you didn't, you know, but it wasn't like its own 10 people in a different room. Why do we not do that with this situation?
That is a very good question, Laura. And that's not something that we, that we could not do. I think because the way it has been set up, the students were, they had some flexibility or leeway on deciding whether or not they wanted to do the BC.
Right, right.
So the commitment of, okay, I'm starting off with the BC, and, and maybe because, you know, Mr. Passwater is new, teaches, I think this is his second year, my years are running together, but it was a way of really kind of building that relationship with students, where they start saying, hey, I could, I can do this calculus, I like Mr. Passwater. And the more he has the pre-calc kids, exactly what you're talking about is definitely something that we could do. We could, we, that is, that idea of the BC, which would be different than actually, actual Physics II, because he's teaching Physics I. actually, actual Physics II, because he's teaching Physics I, and the kids in the, in the back of the room, or, or, they have him and they're doing their Physics II. But that would allow us to be able to put that on the transcript.
That's what I was thinking, is that, that there would cer, it seems to me that there would be some, you know, areas you're trying to get into in college, that it would be more helpful to have that BC on your transcript, not just a qualifying score than AP Stats. And so if that, there's a way, you know, as we continue to look at that, that just might, that just struck me as.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then the second point is that I understand the reason for putting the, the, you know, the whole legal name transcript, I mean, and I think honestly, I think it's a good idea for us to have that someplace in writing. So whether that's in the curriculum guide, or what, and so when we talked yesterday with the superintendent, you know, my concern, our concern, was that it simply said birth certificate, and didn't have those couple of extra words for, you know, or court order, whatever. But I, I think that's important, that we don't just have a practice of that, but we do have it in writing someplace.
Absolutely, I, and.
And so wherever that, you know, makes sense, maybe that's not, maybe that's in the other hand, you know, I don't know, but I think we want that in writing someplace.
From a wording standpoint, what I, after I got that information about wanting clarification with the birth certificate, the language I used was birth certificate or other legal documentation.
Yeah.
Do you think that would suffice in terms of that language, or does it need to be more detailed than, because that gives us the, I mean, someone comes with a court order, they comes with, they come with something that is a legal document, for whatever the circumstance is, that gives us a little leeway.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it might just be something we ask, and some, some school lawyer's got to know exactly what words you use, I mean.
I'll give Michelle a call.
And just, yeah, I mean, whether it's court order, whether it's legal, the thing that worries me about legal documentation is, when you get down a slippery slope of like, what's a legal document?
Right, right.
I mean, my checkbook's a legal document, you know, and so like, ah, and so there's just got to be like precise language. But I do think, I mean, that, it just, you know, as you've said, there's more issues, you know, this recently than in the past, and so we may as well have it not be something that we just rely on past practice, that we have official in writing. And then lastly, again, I mean, I, I am blown away by this English idea. I love it. The, the thing that I want, I guess, reassurance about is, so if we are taking, so the students were taking four full semesters of something, and now we're taking two semesters spread into four semesters, so what's going away? You know, what, and, and I assume, I mean, surely, right, the English people said, what's going away is fine, this other stuff is more important than.
Yes, and speaking with the English department, it was more on the pacing. So say, I'll give you an example, if you're doing an argumentative essay, or you're doing synthesis, or comparing contrasts, being able to have the pacing of something of that, of, of those subject areas, or those topics, and being able to, to, to stretch those out. So while, you know, maybe in the English 11 class, you may have, you know, read a book, and then you write your five para, para, paragraph paper, this is much more intentional and structured in the pace. So I don't want to say anything is really going away, the pacing is just making sure that a student that may not have gotten that in the, that was doing the honor track, and where you're, you're doing two weeks for argumentative essay, now you have a month and a half, two months to, to actually work on the argumentative essay. And the student that would be, you know, that took honor English VII, honor English VIII, honor prep IX, they will still take the AP Lang as a junior, and then AP Lit would be their senior English class. So those kids will continue their same English trajectory as they've, as we've always had.
Well, I guess, though, that my question is, so if I was in regular English as a junior, regular English as a sophomore, I had four semesters of content, whereas now I'm essentially having two semesters of content spread out, right? So there has to be stuff that we were doing in those regular classes that we won't be doing any longer. And so I, I guess, again, I mean, I'm, I'm, because we're doing this, the English people must have said, yeah, we're going to prioritize the AP Lang curriculum, which makes sense, that's why it's AP curriculum.
Right, yeah.
And use that over the course of the two years rather, right?
Yes, I mean, your thinking is absolutely right. It was, it was a, it was a priority, it was their, the priority of writing, and being able to write well.
Well, and, and as someone who teaches writing at the law school level, again, I am jazzed up about that, because, I mean, it's just awesome, it's just so good, oh, it's just so good.
Well, thank you, yeah, and I think they thought the need, they were seeing the need with the, just the regular, with what was involved in the English 11 curriculum, as well as the English 12 curriculum, we would get essays for scholarships, or things that just, stu, our students were not writing well enough after coming through the traditional English 11, 12 curriculum. If you were coming through Mr. Lindhorst, AP Lang, you were pretty, you were pretty strong to be able to submit your essay, we'd make a few revisions, and then you always have that student that, just for whatever reason, didn't want it, didn't want to dictate the AP Lang.
Yeah.
If that is the curriculum, that is, and we've been very intentional and very, I think, sensitive to making sure, sure our students aren't, don't see AP as so, such an overwhelming elitist type of, of, of curriculum. I think with, when we talk about other schools, some of their, their downfalls is that they, they equate AP with the load of work, as opposed to being, let's get things done in the classroom, let's do quality work, you know, so, where a student is, who takes six, Taj had six AP classes last year, and he was not up to four in the morning doing each AP course, and he was able to play sports and be in student council. And I think a lot of our students are realizing, hey, I can, I can work, take three AP classes and, and still have a normal life. So our approach, we're, we're trying to still continue that, even with this setup, where students take an AP course, and it's just, that's just what the curri, that's just the class, so.
It's just great, thank you.
I have a question, you're my English teacher, and I'm one of those guys that needs to take the exit ramp. Do I stay in the same period, same class, and I'm just taught a different way?
Very good question.
I mean, we're not dropping them out into a new class and a new teacher, and.
Well, that, that, because, in talking with Mr. Taylor, he was, he was pretty adamant that, and, and, and talking as a group, I shouldn't just say Mr. Taylor, that, that even with the ele, the one semester 11 over the full 11, that the ex, the primary exit ramp would, would happen 12. Now, you still could have an 11 as well. The way we wanted to approach that, it would be a diff, a change in teacher, maybe, maybe not schedule, but having some sections of an 11, 12, and actually doing almost like a co-teaching, kind of how we have our nine and 10 right now, with Mr. Merly and Ms., Ms. Lewis, where they work with some of our English new E and L students, or some of our resource students. So it would be that type of, that type of English 11, and I don't want to use the word sheltered, but that would be the English 11 that a student would be able to, that really could not handle, handle that curriculum, or it's not appropriate, I should say. They would actually end up, and this is how we're envisioning this, and obviously, we will make tweaks and, and changes as we, we see how this goes, but the, the way this is envisioned is that they would go to an 11, 12 with an English teacher, as well as another co-teacher, to make sure that that 11 and 12 curriculum is, is structured, viable, and still rigorous to, to, to help them. Yes.
Thank you. Feels good to get back to high school curriculum, but also the design of this forever, like you, we just said it, that if, we're teaching BC through Plugville, which is an extra extended time throughout the day, that in the old days, when I went to school, it's where you sit around and you go to clubs all the time, this staff is phenomenal, we're teaching during that time, so as those kids go to BC, get the extra help, the exit ramp also is for those kids to go the other way if they need the extra help on remedial time. It's really a beautiful system. There's a safety net everywhere for each kid, and how these guys set this up. Used to be called Smart Plug, Plug, what was it?
Well, you, you gave the title Plugville.
Did I?
Yes, yes, you did. But it used to be AC, it was always.
Yeah, that's what it was.
And we changed it to.
Things change, I mean, it's been four years, a long time. I have a question off your second question, if you don't mind, and I am curious, physics, if I remember right, four or five years ago, I believe our roster was only, that was with Adisa, it was four, five kids? So I, you know, that is something.
The regular physics was, was four or five kids.
Was a long time ago, was chunking this out to make sure that we have a comprehensive for all subject areas, and I, and, you know, obviously, if we get to that physics two, that's why we have, again, the Plugville and the other things.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Right now, I, I don't have the physics one number off the top of my head, I don't.
That's my question, just curious, and I shouldn't put you on the spot.
No, I, I get you, but right now, we have physics two, we have two kids in physics two this year.
Which is the toughest AP exam, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's one of the tougher ones, yes.
Everyone getting across the finish line.
And again, just trying to give those students the option, we obviously couldn't have a teacher teaching just two kids, and, you know, and having biology classes at 35. So I mean, that, so you have to make a combination with our staffing and our small side, but we, again, I've been using the word innovative, we try to be as innovative as possible with our staffing, as well as our approach, and, as I'm making, I've been in conversation with these gentlemen in terms of, you know, what are some things we can do if that need, if we do have that need, where it can't just be a BC in that classroom, and it does need to be just its own separate entity. So we're, I think we're going to continue to grow, essentially, especially with the relationships these teachers are building, building with our students, and, and as they continue to see success, and even the ones that don't get a three, four, or five, if they continue to see successes with a one or two, and see that they're better prepared for whatever they want to do, this is not to just have everyone go a four-year college route. You know, if your plumber's coming to your house, you want them to be able to articulate, write, communicate, problem solve, all of those things, so. Once again, thank you to you, and thanks to staff. Thank you, appreciate it, hopefully I didn't take too long, so.
Last year, COVID-19, for the last almost a year now, this has been a breath of.
Fun to talk about.
Just to talk about something else, so, nice work.
Thank you.
We expect you to leave now.
All right, all right, you all enjoy your night, you too.
Can we, and I know the state will probably change some things, but can we, do we have to wait to authorize them to start moving on this, because, yeah.
Well, I was going to ask, what's the board's pleasure concerning the 2122 Course Description Guide?
I, I think that I would make a motion, and you can see if someone wants to, is willing to second this, but I would make a motion that we improve the handbook in that the original, you know, the, the whole birth certificate name thing, you know, if, by adding the right two or three words onto that originally proposed sentence, that should be in this opposed to something else, I'm fine with that. And so then that could be, you know, and, and if the answer is it needs to be someplace else, then it stays out. That would be my motion.
Luke's seconding.
Yeah, I would second that. Thank you very much, Laura, I appreciate your time, and.
It's a vote.
Is there any further discussion? All right, then, on the motion to accept the 2122 Speedway High School Course Description Guide, as presented to us with the clerical corrections that might be necessary due to the state, as lo, as well as the addition of the legal name statement, all those in favor, please signify, and that's unanimous pass.
Now we let you go.
Thank you. I don't do this every day, like, every month I can go, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think we have time, if you can get that, this won't be published until, so we have time to get that on there.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You take you. Now to the seventh item on our agenda, to approve a support staff evaluation process.
The administrative assistants, A A, performed a performance climate audit in technology facility, or faculty, I'm sorry, facility department last fall. One of their findings was to improve our departments, was to update our evaluation process. This tool was approved by our legal counsel, my recommendation, or the recommendation, is to approve the support staff evaluation process.
Is there a motion from the board concerning this support staff evaluation process?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion, we approve the support staff evaluation process.
Thank you, and a second.
One second.
Is there any discussion on the issue? All those in favor, then please signify, and that's a unanimous pass. The eighth item on the agenda is the acknowledgement of grants received.
The recommendation is to accept the consensus, the enclosed record of grants of $385,688.26.
I think we'll accept that.
Any concern from the board?
It's a good one.
Sounds good.
Okay. The ninth item on the agenda is to approve the personnel report.
The personnel report for January has several items on it. Recommendation for employment for the following individuals, Zachary Stidham as a custodian, Sam Arons as a long-term substitute, Deanne Martin for a temporary teacher contract, you'll see her name again in the near future, she's going to take one and then do another one after spring break, and then Justin Clampett as the junior high assistant softball coach. On the resignation part of the personnel report, we have the resignation of Tyler Carmichael, a teacher, Justin Clampett is a ninth grade baseball coach, and then on the second page of this, we have some coaches that are volunteering their time to help with our wrestling program, and that is Christian Rich Redman, excuse me, Christian Redman and Charles Harris. I'd ask that you approve the personnel report as presented.
Is there a motion, Luke?
I move that we approve the personnel report as presented.
Is there a second? Laura, thank you. If the board would signify approval, that passes unanimously. Our 10th item on the agenda is to recognize visitors and/or other business. We have no visitors present with us at this time, nor do we have any other business. And so we will adjourn to approve claims and sign warrants. Thank you all very much.